I'd like to call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, August 25th, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbett.
Present.
Counselor Roderick.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Lambert is absent.
Consent agenda. No council minutes available. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Board of Canvassers, five. Library Board of Trustees, personnel board, nineteen. Correspondence received and filed. Tax assessor, approval of abatement. Treasurer, Denise Searle. Distribution of quarterly reports submitted to Division of Municipal Finance and Attorney General. Town Administrator, distribution of report on fire department overtime. Treasurer Denise Searle, distribution of July revenue and budget reports. Any items to be removed? Seeing none, I will let you take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and second. All those in favor, motion carries. Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Joseph Bossum, industrial-grade profit-making noisy windmill place and residential area.
He's not here.
Mr. Bossum here?
Mr. President, he's unable to make it tonight.
Oh, okay. Mr. Randy LeBeau.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. You ready for me now?
Yeah.
All right. I am going to go by the 1212 in the charter, get the 500 signatures, and repeal your ordinance that was passed on the 18th, I believe it was. I talked to the clerk. I have everything in order except for the signatures. I was wondering, the timeframe, do I have? There's nothing set in stone about timeframe.
There is a timeframe, right Nancy?
The timeframe is on the Board of Canvas and the clerk to get it into a referendum. I didn't read any timeframe on Mr. LeBeau's getting the signatures to us.
I'm in the process of getting the signatures right now. I was on vacation. I would have them for you tonight. If there's no timeframe, I'm not going to be in a giant hurry because we're not going to be able to get it out for a referendum until after the November election anyway. So, I just wanted to, you know, I just didn't like the way it went down, my name attached to it, but that doesn't really matter.
We can't comment.
Right, right. So, I'm just putting it out there that I'm going to go through that, through the motions to get that repealed.
Your way. You need a petition on that, but you do have it, the ordinance, the clean ordinance on the website, or I might have sent it to you.
Yep.
But all the timeline, once he hands them into me, I've got 48 hours to get it to the Board of Canvas, and then they've got 60 days to get it out on referendum. So, that's, that's the time.
Yep. So, for me to get the signatures, I can take a month if it takes a month. And then I, after reading the rest of it, of the charter, 15 percent of the town has to show up to vote, or it just sticks, stays as it. So, I'm going to take that chance. But I also applied for the license, just in case. I got to cover my butt at this point. So, I just, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nancy, can I ask a couple clarifying questions on that?
Sure.
Can we, just for everyone's benefit, be clear on what information needs to be gathered by Mr. LeBeau as far as signatures? It says voters, but name, address, just so that we don't avoid a back and forth there.
When they sign it, he'll have to have something that says the address on it, so that we're able to verify that they are a registered voter with the town.
Registered voter.
So, he has to submit. The petition, it actually says in the charter, the, has to contain the full text of the ordinance.
Right.
So, I've already gone over that with Mr. LeBeau. He has to do a petition that says, "Sign this," with all the full text of five pages or whatever it is, and then the lines of the signature.
Correct.
And if he has multiple or whatever.
What I did was I put the ordinance to one side, where they sign on the other side, I have name, print, sign, and address, just like we did for the town council, 50 signatures. Except there'll be 500 signatures.
And it's 15 percent of the total electors, not 15 percent of the town.
Right, which now, the total electors about, I think for the primary is 12,260, something like that, the last time I looked at it, it's about that.
So, the math I did, like, we need 1,700, roughly 1,700 voters to come out and vote.
Yes.
The other question.
You need to carry the majority.
Right. And the other question is, can you guys revisit this ordinance after, so that, let's just say, for instance?
Mr. LeBeau, technically, we can't speak about it.
Oh, so you don't, okay. All right.
This is open forum. It's not council. It's not on our agenda, so we can't discuss it.
Right. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I just didn't know, I don't know how it works yet.
Okay.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Belli. And again, Mr. Belli, I'll just remind you that the council can't comment on it, and if it's illegal action, be very careful.
There was something that was brought to my attention, and I did read this in the Newport Daily News. I do understand that you can't comment on it. This is an item that is on tonight's agenda, under the town solicitor. As a taxpayer, I'm very disturbed with what I've read in the Newport Daily News. I don't know if stuff was misprinted on the Daily News's part. I find that hard to believe, you know, because I do know, you know, I have met the, you know, the head editor at the Newport Daily News numerous times when I was running for council. I would like to know, as a taxpayer, what is the situation going on that a clerical error has cost this town $1.7 million that could have gone towards either paving our road, repaving our roads that are in, the council knows, is in such disrepair? We have a fire chief in the back of this room that's begging year by year for a ladder truck. That could have gone to paving that, paying for that. Or, if we even wanted to, we could have even fixed our pension problem with this money. You know, it seems a clerical error has now caused this, you know, the money we could have gotten on top of the litigation fees that we've paid Mr. Tights to represent us. And I think the opposing attorney had said it correctly, that this is a tragedy for the taxpayers of the town of Tiverton, and that the town of Tiverton should demand from Mr. Tights their money back. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearings and public presentations. Tiverton Fire Department Chief, Robert Lloyd, presentation and recognition for work done to refurbish the 1995 Central State's fire apparatus to be used as reserve apparatus by members of the fire department, DPW employee Paul Rosino, and town resident Raymond Bento.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to bring this forward to you and ask that perhaps on behalf of the council, a letter of recognition could be sent to, and I have a list of all the individuals. Let me go back to the beginning, as, this was the truck over two years ago. We had to take out of service because it was not, it would not pass road inspection, would not pass pump inspection. The guys really liked the truck. The truck mechanically was better than the truck we had in reserve status, but we couldn't get it inspected, and we couldn't get the pump fixed on it. Several members, Lieutenant Gagnon, Paul Russo from Public Works, and Mr. Bento's all stepped up and said, "Look, we really, we'd like to put the time in on this truck. We would like to do it." I said, "I can't pay anybody to work on this truck. We can buy some supplies out of our maintenance account to do what, some of the things that we need to for it." And they took it upon themselves, for two years, a year and a half to two years, they've worked on the truck. A lot of the donations for the lights have come from Whalen Lights. Over at Tiverton Sign Shop, he did the work for the signage on it. And an extensive list of members of the department worked on their own time to fix up the truck that you see outside. And we've put it back in service. We've gotten the engine recertified. We've got the pump recertified on it. It's probably saved the town $300,000 or $400,000 because of the work. And I don't think that should not go unrecognized for the work that they did. We brought it out here today, so people wish to take a look at it. I know it's a busy agenda that you have, but I really would like the citizens to, if they can get a chance, to go out and look at it, because it's almost as if it's a brand-new truck. And we have taken the other truck that did catch fire during Nemo. That truck is now out of service, and this truck does replace it. It's very dependable, and it's a great truck. And I'd like to acknowledge Lieutenant Joseph Pluseka, Lieutenant Robert Gagnon, Captain Bruce Reimels, firefighter Dan Murphy, Lieutenant Craig Camito, firefighter Pete Manchester, firefighter Anthony Moretti, firefighter Thomas Mello, firefighter Trevor Sheehan, firefighter Brad Lynch, firefighter Jonathan Wicks, firefighter Stephen Kelly, firefighter Barrett, and Paul Russo from Public Works, and Ray Bento's for the work that they've done on it. I'll be sending them letters of recognition. I would ask if, perhaps through the town administrator or from the council, that someone else could also give them some acknowledgement. I think it's a great thing they've done.
Thank you, Chief. Actually, it is, it's greatly appreciated not only by the council but by the town. And I would ask the town administrator to send a letter from the council commending and thanking them for all their hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara Donnelly, Chair, Library Board of Trustees, 2013 Annual Report.
I have with me Maureen Morrow, who is the Secretary of the Board, and Greg Jones, who is the Assistant Treasurer. And in the audience is Jennifer Thoreau, who is the Treasurer. And we were just asked to come tonight. I wasn't exactly sure. It was our understanding that you wanted to see us and just meet the board and get an update, I think, on what's been going on. Do you have any questions?
Well, I think, Mrs. Donnelly, just give us an overview of what's been happening. Obviously, we know that beautiful building is moving along, but, you know, tell us how it's going, and in general, what's going on at the library, and what we can hope to see in the foreseeable future.
Well, the, the library has had a very successful year. We have about 3,000 visits to the website every month. We've had a, about 6,000 visits to borrow books from the library. A very successful reading program this year, well, every year. We're always one of the top three, I think, in the whole state as far as our, our summer reading program. So, it's a very, very busy program, and I think it's just going to get busier when we move into the new building, which should be next spring. The building is on schedule. The interior framing is ahead of schedule, and the mechanical contractor is also ahead of schedule. The roofing sub is starting today on the flat roof of the building. And this fall, we will be able to have all of the hard landscapes, hardscapes and landscapes, the finished coat of asphalt will be completed in the spring. But in the fall, all of the landscaping around the building will be done. So, the exterior will look pretty much finished, I think, by the time the fall is well into. The windows are coming September 8th. And anyway, it's really going well. And we are planning a fundraising gala in the spring, in April, probably about a week before the general opening of the building. And we just hope that everybody in the town will come to the general opening, but that also they'll want to come to the preview party, which will be about a week before.
Great. There's a camera on it, right?
Yeah, there, there is a camera on it, but I don't know if everybody can get it.
I think you can. We're talking about a webcam that's at the site.
Have you seen it? Have you gotten into it?
No, but I heard about it.
Yeah, the webcam, but also the actual website. If you click on New Library Building, it will take you in frequently updated photos and so forth. The webcam, though, I think can only be.
Access by.
Access to the password.
Yeah.
And if they're for security purposes.
Right, right.
You have to drive by. And wave as we go by.
Is there anything, any questions or comments?
No, looking good.
Yeah, no, again, congratulations on the progress.
Thank you.
Every time I drive by there, I kind of like beam a little because it just, it's getting closer and closer.
When I go by there, I'm so shocked to see it. That's so unbelievable.
Yeah, we have, monthly, we have meetings, of course, and we're pretty excited about the progress, and we're pretty excited about the new library in town. I think the town residents are really going to be pretty excited too when they see it. It's coming along really well.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we're, couldn't be here tonight. He's our expert on.
Yeah, leave. Leave the way.
Yeah.
He'd be giving you every little detail.
Yeah. How many two-by-fours are in?
How many nails are on that board? Yeah.
I think, I just want to add one thing, just because I think people would like to know that in terms of public fundraising, after we did the initial push, we have pavers program that, where we sold individual pavers that folks could have engraved, and we raised $58,000 from that.
Yeah.
So, that was like way beyond our expectations.
Right.
And it really, we hope, is making people feel like they're going to be part of this building for years to come.
Right.
Great, great. Are the pavers still available?
No.
No.
That ended in June.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anything else from the council?
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Charles Lawrence, Harbor Commission, Water Quality Monitoring, Tiverton's Title Basis, Title Waters.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, and members of the council. Bruce Cox, Chairman of the Harbor Commission, and very fortunate to have Chip Lawrence in our commission and able to present this to the committee, to the town, because he will not blow his own smoke. I will explain to you what you have in the way of an individual in front of you. He is Dr. Charles Lawrence, Professor of Applied Mathematics, Senator of Computational Biology at Brown University, which is a big title. His expertise is in applied mathematics and the application of probability and statistics to biological and geological data. So, when he speaks numbers, you know he's accurate. He knows what he's talking about. But interestingly, I did a little more research on a clip from his Wikipedia reference. So, he's referenced in Wikipedia, which is not something many of us can even think about. He obviously has a PhD from Rensoile. I can't read this whole thing to you because it'll take too long, but in 19, from 1975 to '81, he worked the state of New York Department of Health as Director of Operational Research and Statistics in the Division of Epidemiology. He's now Professor of Applied Mathematics at Brown University. And interestingly, there's a last comment, is Lawrence's key scientific work to date are focusing on logarithmic approaches to biological sequencing analysis. In fact, he's one of the very first to recognize the inherent statistical nature of genome processes. The immense data resulting from genomic sequencing projects could be fully analyzed using statistics. Now, I had to go and look up some of these words. But the genomic process is getting into the process by which, correct me if I'm wrong, how genes work and how a process even works. So, he's been studying, he's been involved in spearheading our water quality testing and doing, you know, the analysis and getting the data for it. So, when he's been doing his research, it's very thorough, and when he speaks, everyone should actually listen because it's accurate and it's good. So, now that I'm embarrassed.
Okay, thank you. I'll try not to blush. Thank you for your overly generous introduction. Oops. Ah, here we go. We'll do a good start, man.
Doesn't work unless it stays plugged in.
Okay, pleasure to come and report about our work on monitoring the tidal waters quality in Tiverton. People call me Chip, so feel free to call me Chip. So, first, I need to acknowledge several folks who worked on this. First, the Tiverton Harbor Commission for all of their efforts to support this work and keep it going. Samplers Dave Stewart, Chris Claridan, Dick Hart, Jessica Blackridge, and Gail Lawrence. The other folks are actually the boots on the ground who collected the water that we have processed. The URI Watershed Watch Program, who actually are doing the analysis of these, and the town council for supporting this effort. Oops, wrong direction. So, we're motivated by, to pursue this for two reasons. One, when the discussion about the aquaculture in Naniquakit was coming up, there was much discussion about, well, what, you know, this is absolutely pristine, with others saying, "No, no, you don't know how beautiful, how pristine it used to be." So, we decided that, well, we really can't just talk about what we thought. We need to gather some data to try to understand this. And then the other thing that was our motivation was questions about the closure to shellfishing in Sepauat Marsh. I seriously doubted that DEM was right about that. Oh, wrong direction. So, the methods that we use are those of the URI Watershed Watch Program. Basically, we're volunteers to their program. So, it's a statewide program. It's been in, in place for over a decade. Its results are expected by DEM. They are all properly certified and so on, right? The volunteers take samples from May to October. They're trained by the URI faculty and staff in April. The volunteers do one assay. It's for dissolved oxygen. You have to do that fast, so they do that. They then send the samples actually through the good auspices of the program in Bristol to URI, and then the URI scientists do all the assays. Okay, so, the program to date, we first took samples in 2012 in Sepauat Marsh, and then in 2013, we went on to do Sepauat, Almy Creek, and Naniquakit Pond. Sample sites in 2014 are Sepauat, Naniquakit, and we've moved over to Fogland from Almy. And we know that the Open Space Commission is monitoring Barton Brook, and that the concert, I understand that the Conservation Commission has had success along these lines with Stafford Pond in the past. So, where do we monitor? Here in Almy Creek, just below Nanquit Pond. That was last year. We're now monitoring here on the north side of Fogland. There are several sites in Sepauat I'll talk to you later about. Last year, we took samples at Evelyn's Dock in Naniquakit, and this year, we're taking them as close to where Sun Fresh Brook enters the, basically the gut there, as we can. So, our focus, I'm going to focus tonight on bacterial contamination, which comes from feces, from various species. That's what makes these bacteria go high. We'll report on these because they're most problematic, and there's two forms of those. There's one that concerns shellfishing, that's fecal coliform. One that concerns swimming, that's enterococci bacteria. So, here are the results we got. Let's just start with our 2013. You can see that at Evelyn's Dock for fecal coliform, that's the one that has to do with shellfishing. At Evelyn's Dock, we found only one modestly high sample. At Almy Creek, we found several samples that were well above the DEM standard, which is a mean of 14, and any 10 percent of them over 31. And likewise, in Sepauat Marsh, that we'll see is Site 1, we found them above the state's limits. And DEM had already closed Almy Creek and Sepauat Marsh to shellfishing. Concerning swimming, so again, Naniquakit at Evelyn's was an acceptable level. Almy Creek had a problematic day. Sepauat Marsh, Site 1, you'll see where it is, was clearly above the 104 limit on two occasions that we measured it. For, yes, for swimming, right, we found Sepauat Marsh to be high on two occasions. We monitored in three places. One, right down where the bridge is that goes out into Secana River is here. One across the main body, the main estuary, and then up here, where there is a cow pasture that's directly adjacent to, very close to where that estuary happens to come in the So, those Sepauat 2012 results show that, yes, indeed, you get a geometric mean above 14, so that's consistent with DEM's closure for shellfishing. It's higher when you come across to the far side of the marsh, and substantially higher when you get to the tributary across from where the cow pasture is. Likewise, for swimming, it's a similar story. It is not above the levels where folks, you know, jump off the bridge there. It's not above the swimming levels there. Across the marsh, it is, and upstream, where the tributary comes in, it is quite high. That's where, it's actually not a tributary, it's only part of the estuary. So, let me go back to here. So, if we take a look at Sepauat Marsh, so once we had these kind of data, we asked ourselves our questions, well, how do you proceed concerning mitigation of this, right, of this issue? And so, we had these results, and we explored what possible sources were. There are some houses here, there are some houses here. I happen to live right about here. There's a pond, I'm sure you all know, as you go down Main Road on the east side, just before you get into Four Corners. We thought, I thought, that actually drained into Sepauat. The answer is, no, it doesn't. The drain on that goes down behind Four Corners. All right? So, the potential sources are these sources. At the far end, you know there's another farm. In that case, the animals have been distant from the marsh for quite some time. So, we explored mitigation, and we chose Sepauat Marsh because it's the easiest one to identify the sources. There aren't too many choices, right? The others are more complicated because you have to consider the whole watershed, right? The stuff that comes down, Sun and Fresh Brook, is going into Naniquakit Pond. Perhaps the high school's problem with their septic system was contributing to that. All right. So, we chose that because of that, and it has a, is easy relatively because first, there isn't much around it, and its watershed is small. So, because it involves a farm, and this was true for the scenario at Stafford Pond, the place to begin is a program that's sponsored by U.S. Department of Agriculture, which the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District basically is the local district that is USDA's, I mean, U.S. Ag Department's commission in this area. And they responded to our request. They've gone to see the landowner, and they've offered to give us further assistance. I've also called RID, Rhode Island DEM. As I understand it, that's the body that has both the responsibility and the authority to do something about water pollution. So, I've talked to, talked to folks there, and they had closed it to shellfishing in 2007. Basically, that happened because somebody got sick at another pond, not in our town, in the western part of the state, from shellfish that were there. They examined all the ponds, they saw the cattle operation, and they said, "Let's, we're going to shut it right away." Then their samples supported their shutting. So, their process likewise is to start with their agriculture division and to approach the landowner to investigate whether or not, to inform that landowner of the various opportunities of both technical assistance and financial assistance to take steps to mitigate this pollution. As I understand it, that's what happened with the farm that's on Stafford Pond, and the farmer and this program cooperated in order to create some barrier plantings and move the cows back a bit, so that this could, those barrier plantings could first filter the material before it got into Stafford Pond. And I'm told by DEM folks that such an, such an approach may well work in Sepauat, given that it is that farm. So, our. So our recommendation is more monitoring and monitoring towards taking steps about mitigation. So RIDEM this spring is the first time they posted their results. Those results now are posted in most places. The one from Sapawat Marsh happens not to be there yet. And so we're happy that they're doing that. We think that we should take steps to mitigate it. After all, the waters of our town are some of their most valuable resources and unique resources. The Harbor Commission sees us taking on a somewhat modified or supplemental goal, and that is not only to monitor it, but to do monitoring that will help identify possible sources, to work in concert with DEM to see if we can't get them mitigated, right? So I've talked to actually three different parties in the water quality and the agriculture depart, divisions of DEM, and they strongly support efforts like ours, ours included, to help identify what the sources are. And one of my questions is, you know, does the council agree that we ought to take this next step? Take samples in order to help identify what the possible sources are and work with DEM to try to get them mitigated. Other waters have been monitored right now. I know that the Open Space Commission has monitored Barton Brook. These are valuable in their own right. They ought to have good quality there, but they are upstream from tidal waters as well, right? So that could help with the effort to looking sources inside the watershed. Great, I thank you much. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. Anything from the council?
Mr. President, I just had a couple of questions for Dr. Lawrence. First of all, thank you, this is awkward. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. Is the 2014 data appearing to be directionally consistent with 2012 and 2013 so far?
URI is slow at putting results up.
Okay.
So sometime this winter, we'll get the bacterial data. The other parameters that I didn't mention will come somewhat later.
Okay. The July readings for 2012 and 2013 appeared to spike.
Yes.
Can we correlate that to heavier rains or some other?
It's more likely heavier rains, I'm told by DEM, it's more likely heavier rains than seasonality.
Okay. Okay. And personally speaking, I support, I think the data is very good data, and I would personally support, you know, taking that next step into identifying sources and putting specific.
So if the council has an opportunity to tell us, either they disagree or certainly if they agree, and certainly if they disagree, we'd like to hear it because that's the direction we plan to go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else from the council?
I just have a couple of quick questions. Thanks very much, Chip and Bruce.
Why don't you gentlemen have a seat? Probably easier so that you don't have to keep bouncing back and forth.
The only question I have is, and certainly thank you very much for the presentation, and thanks for volunteering to collect samples and organize and whatnot. Are there additional areas that the Harbor Commission feels are of interest going forward? Or is it, have we captured in these, you know, it seems like we have three distinct locations, and inside of those locations, we have subs, you know, locations.
So, so other places are Jack's Island and up in the Tigran Basin. But because data is now available on RIDEM, the identification of which places are polluted is substantial data about that. But the identification of what the possible sources are is pretty darn limited at this point.
Well, what I wanted to make clear, and this is my field, not Chip's particularly, is that now, from a governmental perspective, Rhode Island, the Conservation District has expressed a willingness to offer their assistance if the town is interested. We are advisors. We can't say the town is interested. We need a motion and a letter from the board, the council, that says, we are interested in your help. Please come offer assistance through the Harbor Commission or through whatever entity you wish, so that they know they can come in here without stepping on toes. That's, you know, the proper political process. We are a local entity. They can't come in to work in our area without your invitation. So that's the ultimate end result here this evening, I think would be appropriate, is a motion asking the administrator or even the president to send a letter to them. And certainly Chip can provide the address and the contact information necessary that would then get the letter to the right place, so then they will be able to feel free to come in here and say, here's where the problem is, here's how we can offer guidance, and here's, if the guidance isn't accepted particularly well, how we can more forcefully encourage the guidance to be accepted. Because that's the dilemma.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the path forward for us. And I think it couples well with having volunteers and being able to collect that data, you know, consistently across the periods, which is really, from a data analysis point of view, really the most important part is we have consistent data. We don't have these giant holes where we don't really know what's going on. So I'm perfectly comfortable accepting help from agencies, and you guys are the ones on the ground that should be doing this kind of stuff.
Thank you. So our goal is a motion.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, water quality in town has been pretty eminent, probably with this council, from any previous councils. My only question is, and I'll direct this to the town solicitor, just to be sure that we're not stepping on any, you know, legalities and allowing them to come in.
I just think it probably needs to be on the next meeting because the agenda advertises it as update. Well, it says, it just doesn't say update, it just says water quality monitoring. It's not on there as a specific action item, so I would.
Then I'll request that the town clerk put it on our agenda for a vote at our next meeting.
Bruce, can you or can you provide us with a draft resolution of what you'd like?
Certainly.
Because I, and I will speak for myself, but I think I speak for the council that we are in support of this. But we have our own little legalities we have to follow.
For the water testing, because we started off with one site, and now we have three sites. We appreciate that, you know, it's Harbor Commission and waterfront.
In fact, if the councils had their questions answered, now we can put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting, so these gentlemen don't have to come back.
Right.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
If that's fine with you.
It's fine.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you very much, guys.
Conservation Commission, update of public hearings held on Stafford Pond recreation. Good evening, Tom Matipowski.
Got a handout I'd like to just pass out. We'll talk about it a little bit later. Excuse me, a little bit under the weather. And happy tonight, Trish Hilton from our commission. This report is the report that's required by the new chapter in the town code. I think it's Chapter 20 that talks about keeping water quality up in our reservoirs. There is a section in there that we were to meet with the public and then come back and report to you about our efforts to try to get some sort of compromise on what the public can do with regard to recreation on the pond, both people that live next to it and people that bring their boats to the DEM dock. And so this report, this oral report, is to bring you up to date on what we've had so far with that. And feel free to interrupt me if I forget something. We had two public meetings. One was on, in November of 2013. We just had one in July of this year. I think that the last one, Council Gerlach and Chabot were at the meeting. And my personal opinion, I think the opinion of the Conservation Commission, we were very disappointed with what happened at both of those meetings. They weren't well attended, quite frankly, but the people that did come to the meetings were very, very opposed to any attempt by anyone to restrict what they would view as their use of the pond or their traditional uses of the pond, including things like mandating smaller motors on boats or restricting swimming and other activities that would bring people into contact with the drinking water. They really felt they were doing their due diligence by investing in up-to-date septic systems and updating their septic systems. And I don't knock that, that's a large cost, and we know a lot of the systems in that area are subpar. But it may not be the only thing that we need to do in that area. But they continually brought that up. And they would also bring up things like, you can't regulate what you don't own, and we don't own it, and things of that sort, a whole bunch of different legal issues that I'm not an expert on and don't propose to go in with you tonight. We discussed this at length at our last conservation meeting, and it was back and forth and back and forth. But finally, I think, and again, correct me if I'm going off track here, that the feeling was we could not achieve a compromise like we had hoped to get the residents to agree to some reasonable limitations in exchange for preserving the water. So we believe we have to go back to, our working group has to go back to the DEM and basically let them know that, that we could not work that out. And that we would request from the DEM and also from the Department of Health, a letter being sent to everybody that lives along the pond, reminding them that swimming in it is against the state rules and regs and other issues about contact with it and things that they should and should not be doing in order to maintain the quality of the water in the pond. We've also talked about the instance of people bringing boats to the boat ramp that are above the motor limits, even the DEM puts out currently. And the idea was that we would ask them to install a camera or two there so that it could record activity, even if we're not able to get there in time. And we know they don't respond very quick because most of their police officers are elsewhere in the state. We would at least have a picture of the registration of the offending boat, or maybe the boat trailer license plate, or the license plate of the car, so we could give that to them, or they could take action themselves to pursue that and to make sure that doesn't happen again. And we have to also look at the, let me read my writing here. Oh, the people, and Trish is on this committee, we are still dedicated to work on the new language to the watershed overlay districts, or actually just revisions of that. It's being looked at to make sure that, from a zoning point of view, that the language is proper and does in fact put in what we need to protect the water source and the water quality there. And I think that, I'm not sure exactly when that's due to be finished, it's still ongoing, right? Okay, but it'll be done sometime in the near future, and at least we'll have that. So I guess the issue is that, since we couldn't come up with a compromise, the danger is that DEM might come back and want to treat everybody the same. But we tried really hard to get people to compromise on this, and it just wasn't on the agenda. And just to reiterate how important it is, the handout has two different articles that had been in the paper over the last few months. The first one is about the city of Portland in Oregon, which decided on two separate occasions because their cameras caught someone urinating into a reservoir, one person, to dump millions and millions of gallons of water out of that system. And fortunately, they have multiple reservoirs, so they could do that. If that were to happen here, and that were to be the decision, we'd be in trouble because we have that one reservoir for about half the water that people use. So it's that serious if something like that happens. When people ask us, why can't we swim? Why can't we do this, this, or that? There's a good example. The other one is about the recent problems that the city of Toledo in Ohio had with its drinking water. As you may recall, they pull their water from Lake Erie, and they had some algal blooms that were triggered by phosphorus and fertilizers and things like that building up in the water. And they were actually shut off and could not pull water out of the lake. And everybody had to use bottled water or some other source for at least, I think it's like a week or similar length of time. And of course, this problem is something that could happen on our pond. We know we have a phosphorus issue. We know the phosphorus issues are right on borderline to being a problem, if not over. And we never know when and if this might happen, so there could be issues like this with our pond, and we really need to keep up on trying to prevent that from happening and keeping the quality as high as possible. So just a reminder that the issue doesn't go away just because we couldn't get agreement. We still need to do something. And our view was, I guess we have to go back to the DEM and bring it back to their court. And if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Anything from the council?
I think at that meeting, one of the comments made by the residents that was new to me as new information, was that the original intent of pulling water from Stafford Pond was for fire hydrants and not for drinking water supply. And I'm concerned as to when that changeover happened. When did it go from fire hydrants to drinking water? And were the residents aware of that? How did that process occur? I would like more information on that.
We can find out, I believe that it was sometime in the 1950s when Stafford Pond, I believe it was sometime in the 1950s when Stafford Pond started applying football.
And I think I did.
And recognizing that that did change, the regulations about swimming and drinking water have been in the books in the state of Rhode Island since the late 1800s. So at some point when that happened, that regulation about not swimming and drinking water was in fact. But we can certainly find out exactly when Stone Bridge started pumping toilet water.
Just want to see where there was notification to the landowners around the pond that was occurring and would impact their property rights. I believe there, also in the 1990s, there was a legislative commission to review the recreational use on Stafford Pond. I think it was one of the local acts. I have not been, it was not online, so I couldn't find it. I'd like to have more information on that.
We'll try if we can find it. I mean, we've tried to go back and look at some of the history on Stafford Pond. There is some of it available, but, you know, things that are, you know, date to 50s or 60s are not often well documented. So we'll do the best we can to dig up information. Stone Bridge itself may have some historical records on when they were given approval to proceed. One of the, one of the issues here is that technology has changed and what we know about drinking water has changed, and so have the pressures on the drinking water supply. We use a lot more water now as a people than we did in the 1950s. And we generate significantly more amounts of wastewater than we did in the 1950s. In the 1950s, a lot of people didn't take a bath every day. Sometimes they took a bath once a week. And people didn't, you know, have washing machines, and so they didn't wash their clothes every day, and they didn't have jacuzzi bathtubs and, you know, rainhead showers and all that other stuff. So, you know, while we can, at some point, look back and say, well, in the 1950s, the reservoir could support these things, and it was okay. The pressure on the reservoir is dramatically increased. Many of the houses in the 1950s around Stafford Pond were not year-round rentals or year-round houses. They were seasonal summer cottages that people visited for a couple of months a year. So, you know, change isn't always easy, but, but the pressure on that pond has been significantly increased, you know, over time. And state-enabling legislation now with regard to drinking water does allow both the municipality and the state to put additional recreational restrictions on any public drinking water supply in the state. So, you know, at some point, the state recognized themselves that how a drinking water supply was managed in 1930 or 1940 or 1950 may not be appropriate for, you know, what happens today. So the state did change the regulations at some point to allow, as I said, both municipalities and the state to put recreational restrictions on drinking water supplies. But we will try and find out more of the history, if it's available, from the 50s.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council?
I just want to thank the Conservation Commission for continuing to push at this very important issue. I know it's a lot of work on the clock and off the clock, so thank you very much. You know, this is really important, you know, to, I think, a huge amount of effort has been made to try to find common ground here and avoid, you know, folks at the state level from coming down and pushing something that, you know, residents or folks who enjoy the And so, I think we've tried and, you know, we might have to, we might have to take that next step.
And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Proclamation, Constitution Week, September 17 through September 23rd, 2014. And the proclamation reads, whereas, we the people did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity. And whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice embodying the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law, not by man. And whereas, it is the greatest importance that our citizens fully understand that the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution are to support, preserve, and defend it against all encroachment. And whereas, the 227th anniversary of the adoption of the Constitution provides the historic opportunity for all Americans to realize the achievements of the failures of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibilities it affords. And whereas, the President and Congress of the United States issues a proclamation designated the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week to commemorate the signing of the Constitution on September 17, 1787. And whereas, the citizens of the town of Tiverton, Rhode Island, do enjoy the blessings of liberty, the guarantees of the Bill of Rights, equal protection of the law under the Constitution, and the freedoms derived from it. And whereas, the independence granted to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalizations, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week. Therefore, we, the Tiverton Town Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the town of Tiverton and urge all of our residents to reflect during that week on the many benefits of our federal Constitution and American citizenship. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Tiverton to be affixed this 25th day of August in the year of our Lord 2014 by orders of the Tiverton Town Council. Edward A. Rogge, Council President. Advertise Public Hearing, Town Administrator.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask in a moment that this be continued for another two weeks to your next council meeting for a number of reasons. First and foremost, there are quite a number of items on your docket this evening and from immediate past council meetings that have occupied my office to a degree where this has not risen to the top of the inbox. There are three categories where more work is required on this resolution. Licensing, that's done out of the town clerk's office, the code enforcement officials' overall mandate or interaction with zoning and all of the zoning fees and the recreation fees that are charged for any number of programs that are run by the Recreation Commission over the course of the summer and throughout the beaches and parks. We are getting very close to having a code enforcement officer, we have an offer outstanding, I'm waiting for the background check, I'm hoping to have that on your agenda in two weeks as well. I'd like to task that person of helping with this part of the responsibilities of that office, so first and foremost, they get a grasp on the economics and the extent to which those fees, I don't want to call it a profit center, but generate revenue for the town and whether or not they're an impediment to the intelligent process that we need to have in that office. So, I am waiting for that person to come on board before I launch that analysis. On the licensing issue, I think what we need is best practices and we need to run out and figure out what other towns are doing for secondhand holiday and other licenses that are in this structure. I'm going to keep working on that myself and work with the town clerk's office to accomplish that for the next two weeks. It is not a terribly difficult assignment, it's just tedious. And last but not least is recreation and here, a fair amount of work has been invested in the past month in trying to get a handle on how much revenue comes into these programs, how much is paid out to our instructors and whether or not the objectives of the Recreation Commission are to subsidize these programs or whether the thought has always been or should be that the program should be self-sustaining from their income. So, we're going through that process. Recreation Commission meets once a month and we're trying to have this dialogue back and forth primarily from my office to individual members of that commission. But I would like to have all of those things buttoned up for you in one piece and it's not, it's just not ready yet for this evening. So, with that said, I would ask your indulgence for two more weeks and we'll return to it at that time.
Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, although I'm in agreement with the Town Administrator, Mr. Rogge, I don't think two weeks is going to do this, I have the queries on a public hearing then.
Right.
So, maybe we should just table this, let me re-advertise it because it's been continued and continued. Let me re-advertise it for the date when Mr. Rogge has a little more of the puzzle put together here.
So, you could advertise it in, what, three weeks and then it would be, what, two weeks?
It's only a fee resolution, it's not an ordinance change, so it's 10 days, so whatever meeting he's ready for, we'll just advertise it the two weeks before.
So, it'll probably end up being in October.
For the second meeting in September?
It can't make September 8th, the queries are on it.
No, 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 not the first meeting in September, the second.
The second one's what, the 21st, 22nd in September? But, I mean, as long as I don't have to come back here, you know you want it on the next available, as soon as Matt tells me he's ready, we'll advertise it.
So, it'll either be the 22nd or the October.
Or the October.
Right.
It'll give a little more time to get.
Okay.
Mr. President, just one comment. I know the Town Administrator is recommending removal of a lot of the sewer and sewage disposal fees. I believe that would require an ordinance change as well, not just a.
Just a fee resolution.
Right.
Yeah, the ordinance will be.
Don't want to forget that piece of it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table this. We have motion in the second, all those in favor, motion carries. Town Council sitting as the Board of Licensing, Three Ducks Car Wash, 400 Main Road, request approval of licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements, petroleum license, tobacco dealer's license, and a holiday license.
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. My name is Scott DeMello and I represent Three Ducks Car Wash Corporation and with me is Mr. Michael Neves, who's the president of the corporation.
Welcome.
As you indicated, we're requesting the issuance of three licenses, a petroleum license, a tobacco dealer's license, and a holiday license. My understanding with reviewing the file ahead of time is that with regards to the petroleum license, that there is an issue of an outstanding notice of violation from the Department of Environmental Management. The prior owner, Three Ducks Car Wash, Mr. Neves, has purchased the property and since that time, he has applied to DEM to have transfer of the ownership and the licenses with DEM. They have done that, I've provided a copy to the clerk's office of the underground storage tank registration invoice that he received indicating that now DEM is recognizing Three Ducks Car Wash Corp. and Michael Neves as the owner-operator of the facility. The outstanding notice of violation is, the fine portion is still outstanding. There was a, there were really two components to the notice of violation issued by DEM. The primary reason for the violation, as I understand it, was record-keeping. The prior owner had not submitted certain records to DEM for a period of time and they issued a notice of violation to him. Along with that was a $6,000 fine. Our understanding from when, just prior to when we purchased the property, that DEM has, is satisfied with the records, they were provided with the records prior to Mr. Neves purchasing the property and the only thing that remains outstanding is the $6,000 violation. And I believe April and I believe the clerk has a copy of a letter that DEM had provided to the prior owner. It was an offer of settlement and compromise where they were willing to accept $2,500 in lieu of the $6,000. The quid pro quo for that was that they had to pay it within 30 days and the prior owner did not. So, we, I have been attempting to contact DEM to try and see if they will allow us to also be able to use that same offer and compromise to pay the $2,500 fine instead of the $6,000 fine. Unfortunately, the woman that is handling it at DEM was on vacation last week and I believe she's back next week, so I can't report to you what my conversations with her because I'm waiting for her to return. But we expect to have the notice of violation completely resolved within the next week or so, which would, I think, resolve any outstanding issues with DEM and then just subject to getting the licenses here.
Well, I guess at this time, I would suggest that we put this on our next agenda. Approval subject to meeting all legal requirements. Yeah, so that means the petroleum license would be the only one that would be in question until we get that clarified.
The license, this is a show cause hearing effectively, right? Because we continued it, okay.
No, we just re.
New license?
My client purchased the property at a foreclosure sale approximately, probably about three weeks, a month ago now. And we are now applying for the issuance of the licenses to allow him to operate as the gas station, a convenience store, and a car wash.
Okay, because we did have it down at one point as a show clause on the other one. When is your anticipated opening date?
I think within a month would be if we were.
September 9th is what we're targeting for.
As long as the fee issue gets resolved.
Right, because, I mean, it would be subject to meeting all legal requirements and if they don't have.
Yeah, I think it would be, I would be comfortable with the issuance of it, but subject to receiving that sign-off from DEM before you get the petroleum license. It would be granted tonight by the council but not issued, so you wouldn't be able to open until you've given something to the clerk that says you're clear with DEM.
There's no question we wouldn't be able to open until DEM gives us the clearance anyway, so that would be acceptable to us.
That way you wouldn't have to continue it to.
Right, because it would be.
And then at least they'd know.
Yes.
Mr. President Majestad, we haven't seen, I know they've made some changes in the facility, I know there will be fire code issues, I would suggest that tomorrow morning they get in touch with the Fire Marshal's Office and get that corrected also because the firearm will need an updated inspection certificate on it, their suppression system will need to be tested and showed that it's valid, so we haven't seen any of that yet, so.
If they're looking for the 9th.
Yeah. Anything from the council?
That's part of the legal.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion regarding the licenses for Three Ducks Car Wash, 400 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements and I will ask the town clerk and Mr. Neves if you'll, and your attorney, if they will make sure that they contact the town clerk's office as soon as you have any answer on the fee with DEM. Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the petroleum storage license, tobacco dealer's license, and holiday license for Three Ducks Car Wash Corp., subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor, motion carries.
Thanks very much. Good luck.
Good luck, welcome. Mark Faris, Doing Business, Second Season Antiques, 1048 Crandall Road, request approval of antique license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Mr. Faris? Town Clerk, any issues?
The antique license, no.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve of the antiques license for second season antiques and used items at somewhere on Crandall Road, right? 1084 Crandall Road.
1048.
Oh, it says.
I'm sorry, 10, we have three addresses on here, we have 1048, 1084, and 1060.
That's right. 1060.
It's 1048.
The agenda is 1060.
He's applied for a license at 1060 Crandall Road, the, a code enforcement officer has approved at 1048 Crandall Road and the license says 1084 Crandall Road.
Well, that's taken from the home address that has on his trade name.
I would probably.
And it's taken from his letter, so that's where we're taking them all from whatever they look. So, we'll get the date, we'll get the address correct.
On his application, he went 1060.
I imagine it's probably the white one.
Yeah, okay, because we have an issue of zoning variance that was granted for 1048 Crandall Road that allows the use.
Right.
Okay.
Right, but he's asking for 1060 in his application.
No, his home is 1084.
Yeah, his home is 1084.
It says, home address 1084 Crandall Road, business address 1060 Crandall.
Yeah, are they, yeah, they.
The opposite of the address.
Okay, well, I will, okay, so.
The correction there, yes.
So, the zoning variance only applies to 1048?
That's what I'm asking.
Right, so we have to ensure which address we're actually issuing the license to.
I mean, it would have to be the 1048 address, there's the zoning variance and effect for that.
But if the antique store is actually in 1060, then we need to know that.
It's very possible if the legal address is 1048, but the.
It may all be the same property.
Yeah, right, 1060 may just be what everybody calls it type of thing. So, I would, okay, so let me restate this. I have moved to approve the new antiques license for Mark Faria, Second Season Antiques, 1048 Crandall Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements. And you will come back to us if it's 1060 or if there's other clarification required. Right.
Second. We have a motion in the second, all those in favor, motion carries. Charles Corallo, CMC Family Limited Partnership, 1764 Crandall Road, request approval for renewal of quarry license. Mr. Tights?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a few quarries in the town that are operating that don't have active licenses. And then we have this one which isn't actually operating but was as diligently maintained its license and we switched over to the licensing from the, from the building official to the town council. The application was applied for, the study was done on the bonding by Commonwealth engineers. The owner actually objected, thought it was a rather large amount on the bond. We said, have your engineer talk to our engineer, they came to a number that was agreed upon and approved by our engineer. And I believed, I had believed that it had previously been issued on this, it had gone to the planning board, it had gone, and previously been issued. Obviously, we've been working on trying to bring the quarries that are problems into line and this has slipped through the cracks. He does desire to keep it up, keep the license going and he's been complying with all our licensing requirements to date. So, it'd be our recommendation to grant it, it's through the end of November, to the extent the ordinance is amended between then and now, he'll have to comply with newer requirements come when the next round of licensing occurs. But for the time being, this is the only person who has diligently complied with our requirements.
Do we have a copy of this survey on hand?
And it would also be subject to, just because the planning board hasn't seen it this year, it would be subject still to the planning board review.
It isn't being used as a quarry at all, right?
It's not, not to our knowledge, it's not being actively used.
The pictures certainly don't look like.
Kate went out and did an inspection, you can tell there's no trucks, no anything has ever been able to get through, it's overgrown with vegetation and whatnot.
He's just maintaining the license.
That's right, clearly in the past, within at least the last year, there's been no activity there.
I'll ask again, do we have the survey that's referenced in here?
I believe, I don't have it personally, but I believe that Kate has it.
Right, because, yeah, I have all this stuff, but she reviewed it before she went out there and we have all that stuff in hand and the.
Can we see it or?
The actual survey? Sure.
Yeah. It's one of our requirements for licensing, I just thought it would be useful to see.
I'm gonna have to make up with this big survey. Why don't I put it on, why don't we put it on the next one where we can, because I gotta downsize that survey for everybody to see.
I just want to understand this better, the area and the size of the hole, it's something that's shrouded from view, so it's not an easy thing to see, I just wanted to understand a little bit better about what it looks like.
Okay. Kate, you do have a physical description of what you went out and saw, didn't you?
Yeah, I read this, but-
Right. Okay.
But you can't, I mean, you can't see 15 feet without the amount of vegetation that's in the pictures, that's all, I'm trying to understand what this hole looks like. If there is a hole, if there's not a hole, I'll be happy to shut up, but I'm just trying to understand it.
Do you want to hold this for a few minutes, and we'll go look and see if we can-
Yeah, we'll move on to appointments and resignations.
Well, I have a question that can probably be answered in the meantime, but why, why do we have a subdivision bond for $23,288 for this, was this a subdivision, or?
No, it's just the terminology they used as a performance bond.
And how does that number come to be?
That number came to be because our engineers, Commonwealth engineers-
That's what they, okay.
Well, that's what came up, in the end, that was approved by them, they did initially come up with a higher number, Mr. Cuello objected, his engineers met with Commonwealth, and this was the number that was agreed to by Commonwealth.
How much higher was the original number?
I don't recall.
Okay, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars versus 25, right?
I don't think so, I don't honestly remember, it was a couple of years ago.
I, yeah, I don't think it was, I think it was maybe-
It was probably in the 50s.
I think it was in the 50s, but maybe that's not right, but, okay.
I mean, in addition-
That makes me feel a lot better.
Well, in addition to your request, I, you know, on Kate's memo here, it seems as though that there's still an outstanding requirement on behalf of the applicant for this 6,000 cubic yards of stockpiled loan to be available for any sort of site restoration.
Yes, and he's confirmed that is on there. I do have, that they have the 6,000, I have further correspondence from him.
On-site.
Yes.
And just a matter of procedure, why are we seeing it before the planning board sees it on the 2nd of September?
Because he actually applied for this when we started talking about the quarry ordinance, and so he kept getting postponed and postponed, and he doesn't want to, he wants his license, even though he's not an active quarry, he's kept it all the way through. Now, the next meeting on September 8th, we're gonna have the quarry ordinance again, and he keeps, he's been complying all along, he keeps getting postponed and postponed because of that, and that's really, since he was closed, there's really not much change, and Kate has, we have the plan here, and Kate can tell you, she went right out to the hole to look at the hole.
I discovered something called thorn bush, fire thorns, or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are really cool. So this is the, the survey that's on file, and you see the lowest elevation is 78 feet, and the top of the bank is 104 feet, and then it slopes up from there gradually.
Is that, is that grade, what we'll call grade, that bank, or is that higher than-
Yeah, the bank's actually a little higher than grade, so the grade really is probably around, between 96 and 100 is, is grade, and then there's kind of a steeper slope along the north side, and then this part is pretty level, so it's actually not a pit, it's one of us, in a lower area.
It's like cut into a hill, almost, right.
Right, this part is vegetation growing in the, in the lowest point, you know, bigger than, you know, I'd say eight to 10 feet tall scrub trees, that kind of thing, so there's obviously, there hasn't been any-
Digging at all.
Digging, I did observe the stockpiles, the reason I had recommended the confirmation on the stockpile law was because I didn't, wouldn't, I couldn't tell you if it was 6,000 cubic yards or not, but the property owner has stated that that's there. It's very overgrown.
So, how big is the parcel?
The entire parcel is quite big, I would say around 55 acres, the area of the quarry is just under two acres.
Oh, okay.
So even the expansion, they're showing the 25% expansion allowed under zoning, that's another half an acre.
Pretty small area.
So the maximum build up is, is just around two and a half acres.
Okay.
Kate, just to throw a record, this, this was passed out here, this aerial photo here, this gives an idea of the whole property and how far back the actual quarry is, is that correct?
Yes. And then if you see the north, there's a cleared area, that's where the stockpiles-
Loomis.
Loomis, and that's the higher part of the site.
Great, thanks.
Just one other comment, Mr. Cuello, by doing this and getting this license through November, the licenses expire November 30th anyway, but he will not have to go back to the planning board and all, and this is the actual, the quarry that we have that is cooperating with everything that is necessary.
And then not-
So he can easily be on that November 1st for another year, as long as his bond's in place.
Yeah, and I think the quote-unquote quarry exposure we have at that site is pretty minimal, I think they'd have to dig really far down to start alarming people, we're talking about a half an acre expansion, it's, that's not a lot of space.
Especially around 55 acres.
Yeah, and it's in the middle of nowhere.
It really is, I know.
I mean, it's not nowhere, but it's, it's off the, way off the road, there are lots of buffers, so, thank you.
Kate, do you want to motion?
Yeah.
To the, to the, to the order to a home, meeting all legal requirements.
Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the quarry license renewal for CMC, right, CMC Family Limited Partnership of 1764 Crandall Road, Charles Cuello is the name of the license holder, subject to meeting all legal requirements, and I'm sorry, you said something else. And, oh, and approval from the planning board review and-
Planning board positive recommendation.
And subject to planning board review and positive recommendation.
Second. We have a motion second.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
And in Kate's letter here, it signifies it's an R-8 zoning district, do they have a variance to run this?
They're legal non-conforming use, all, all the quarries in town are legal non-conforming use, they're not allowed in any zone, even in the main-
So how long has he not been operating the license? Do we know that?
Well, under Rhode Island, I mean, this is part of, under Rhode Island law, in order for a non-conforming use to be abandoned, there has to be, it's not just not using the use, there has to be an action or failure to act on the part of the owner that would lead to the conclusion that the use is abandoned, so by keeping the quarry licensed, he is not abandoning that legal use, and it is costing him money, he has to get the bond every year, so forth, so that's what is keeping it as a pre-existing legal use, that's, that's his incentive.
So does the effective date of this license go back to last November 1st of 2013?
Yes.
Yes, because you're going-
Because this November 1st, it'd be up again.
December 1st, 2013.
December 1st, 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the council? Okay, we have a motion second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Okay, appointments and resignations, appointments Arts Council, two vacancies termed to expire 4/15/2016, Deborah Ann Gee, 15 Evans Avenue, is Ms. Gee here?
Yes, I am.
Please come forward. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
The TV audience does not have the luxury of having this in front of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would have made more copies, I thought you were all going to get them.
If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm originally a Vermonter.
Who won't hold that against you?
You shouldn't, I came very, very qualified from Vermont, having been exposed to a lot of art from very early age, and I actually graduated with a degree in art and a degree in elementary education, so I combined the two. I have been a practicing artist my whole life, since I think my first art show was when I was five, so, so I've had that. I've been teaching in Massachusetts, in Somerset, Massachusetts for 42 years, this is the end of my second year of retirement. I didn't apply for anything in town, I'm a resident since 2000, because I dedicated myself to my art and my students' art, and because I have no family in this area, my summers were spent with my family in other areas, so I'm now in a position to be here more often during the summer, year-round, and so on, and not be traveling quite as much. I want you to realize that you probably are getting not only a qualified artist and a very qualified teacher who teaches students how to be independent, and how to set their own goals, and establish their, their own behaviors and so on, and I set up my own gifted program within the school system, and it went as far as not just art, but it hit all different areas, so research was being done, so I'm very qualified in research. Technically, I have worked with PowerPoints and Elmo, I don't know if you know what that is, but you can actually demonstrate by, by putting things on top of this machine, and it flashes onto a screen. There's also another piece of technical equipment I use, which is called a smartboard, which means that I could present a PowerPoint, and my students could interact to it, so I could ask questions, and they could relate to what I was going to be teaching them, and then we could go, we could save it and go back to it, so that I taught them as I was taught, so there's a process in art, and so all my students went through a process. I've worked both as a school teacher, I have worked within the town, different towns, mainly Somerset, because I've lived here in this, this area the longest, I have worked on state function things in the arts, and I've worked with college students at, through UMass Dartmouth for numerous years as a student teacher, and I took that very seriously, I wanted them to be as qualified as I felt I was, and, and so that took a lot of extra time to be able to teach them some things I felt they know. I'm an unusual person in the sense that I am very organized, I have, for a long time, been on different kinds of committees, and have, have set up or were working with a Disney museum for many, many years, our sixth graders went to the museum, and weren't just on a tour, but were on a tour to gather information, to create their own art, and then they had an art show, so I've entered, my students have entered competitions, my gifted students have kept their own electronic journal, that's like having a sketchbook that you can carry out of, out of the building with you, that shows not only your own art, but I wanted them to be able to evaluate their work, so that was part of what was on, on it, they, we went to shows, we went, one of the places we went to for painting was in Newport, we went into Boston for day trips of art exposure, so they were actually working in their, in their art. I think there's anything else I have.
No, thank you so much.
I'm, I've worked with the Historical Society in Middlebury, I've worked with the Historical Society in Hancock, New Hampshire, I have a friend that's there, so I've worked through the school system, library, and Historical Society, I've worked with the town of Somerset's library, I developed an art show that went on for numerous years, it started when they were celebrating, I think it was 100 years of, of their opening, and so I was on a panel, and we developed it, so any resident or anyone who worked in Somerset could put a piece of artwork in the show, and that included children, so that meant that we, we went straight through to senior citizens and people who painted all their lives, and I'm also qualified in lots of different art areas, I'm a well-rounded artist, so watercolor seems to be, and landscape seems to be my primary interest.
All right, thank you so much.
Very good.
Hey, any questions?
I think I would be a good asset to this, and have the time now to be able to go up to it.
Any questions from the council?
I think this is wonderful, your resume or, or your application is, we usually get hand-scribbled three or four sentences, and, and this is very exciting to have someone as qualified as you on the Arts Council, I think you'll benefit a great deal.
Very open-minded about things, so I will always have to have my way.
We're actually neighbors, and, and your hydrangeas are the envy of the neighborhood.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I think my front yard, thanks to Chris McGreevy, so, with, thank you. I haven't lived here for very long, but I enjoy this community very much, and hope to offer some other things, I do belong to the senior citizens, and have started some things there as well, so.
Very good, very good.
I'm, I'm trying to become involved in my community.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to move that we approve the application and the appointment to the Arts Council of Deborah Ann Gee for a term expiring 4/15/16.
Second.
That's it.
We have a motion second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll just remind the people out there that there is still one more vacancy, so please, if anyone is interested, please apply.
If you, if you are a resident here, but don't own a home here, if, if you vote here and are a resident here, can you apply?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I have a neighbor across the street from me that is a Weaver, and will be retiring in by Christmas, so I'm from, she was a librarian in the school system, and I might just suggest to her that she might find it an outlet as well.
Great.
For her, because she's, she's really talented, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, welcome. You have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, no financial business, new business, Capinelli Properties of Tiverton Incorporated requests acceptance by the town of the public improvements in the Contral Farm subdivision, Contral Farm, Contral Road, and Alexandra Circle, and a planning board recommendation.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jerry Leary representing the applicant, Capinelli Properties of Tiverton, Inc., I'll make this brief, because it's kind of an obvious situation, the, on June 15th of this year, the, on July 15th, I'm sorry, the planning board voted to recommend to you the acceptance of these public improvements, you, you have the letter, the memorandum, and basically what will happen from here, if the council votes to accept the, the public improvements, is that we will conduct on September 3rd the Homeowners Association meeting, we will then go back to the planning board for the release of the existing surety, if the planning board is satisfied as to what we've done at that point, they will release that, and we will post in its place a $37,500 cash maintenance surety for a period of four years. And having said that, I know Kate Nishioda is here, and Steve Belucci's here, if the council has any questions, we'll try to jointly try and answer.
Kate?
You're in receipt of the memorandum dated August 5th, which goes through a lot of the background and history of the petition, there was a good deal of discussion about how to best handle the site conditions, and I believe, I, I know the planning board voted to recommend the public improvements with those conditions of the replacement of the surety with a cash maintenance surety in that amount, and also the establishment of a functional homeowners' association in accordance with the recorded documents and requirements.
Any questions from the council?
No.
Okay, Mr. Belucci.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. I'm not gonna let you. Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a difficult problem spanning 10 years of construction, over that 10 years, we had the base surface down for several of them, maybe seven or eight, it got deteriorated a bit, and the contractor came in, and we put an extra layer of one inch of blacktop across the whole project that wasn't originally called for, and then we put the top course down. The project over that 10 years showed some signs of distress and needed repair, repaired 19 different drainage structures because of various problems, they were repaired, and this surety is basically to cover- And this surety is basically to cover five more catch basin settlement issues. It's $7,500 apiece. Who can predict what will happen in the next four years, but it's some kind of surety. So that's the reason I supported it. I came here when the base course was already down, wasn't involved with anything below that, and we repaired everything that I found deficient before we put the top course on. And that's where we're at.
You're great. Steve, the $37,000 surety, cash surety is, in the event that, as you said, seven or five catch basins? In the event that the homeowners association doesn't get up and running and sort of finish those improvements?
Well, it really has nothing to do with the homeowners association. It's strictly a point between the town and the developer to settle an issue that we had.
The town would be responsible?
Yeah, once, once we accept it, we'll be responsible.
Oh.
So it's actually, it's like a prepayment for that.
So these are, these need doing.
These may come up in the next four years. And that's about as far out as we could go.
If for some reason there were no repairs needed, then the understanding is the money would go back to the developer at the end of this four-year period. But there was, the $37,500 was taken by, they looked at the remaining catch basins, assumed that 15% of those catch basins would fail. They assumed a cost per catch basin of between $5,000 and $10,000. So they took a $7,500 average and then made that calculation.
And did the liability for the homeowners association presumably as any swales or drainage?
That's correct. They're responsible for maintenance of the open space, which here doesn't exist because the regulations require, I mean, sorry, the declaration requires that the open space be left in a natural vegetative state. But yes, you're correct. Those portions of the drainage system that are not on town property, they're required to be.
Okay. Great.
Anything else from the council?
Just a couple of questions. On phase three, will that ever be built out?
I can't answer that. I mean, I agree, I don't think anybody knows the answer at this point.
Okay.
It's not, there are no plans to do it right now.
The reason why I ask is that in phase three, I believe the Cottrell Road continues.
It does.
So if we approve the Cottrell Road here, it's only a portion of the Cottrell Road that's on the plan. Just want to make that clear that it's not the.
We'd have to put up another surety.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, for extending the road.
And those plans haven't been recorded either for the phase three. It's vested as a master plan, but they would have to come back and record and post surety for that phase three before they could do any construction.
That was the only question I had.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the council, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept by the town the public improvements in the Cottrell Farm subdivision, Cottrell Farm, Cottrell Road and Alexandra Circle.
Second. We have motion second. All those in favor?
Do we need to have it subject to?
Well, subject to the.
Groups of homeowners?
The setting up of the homeowners.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
And agreement with the planning board.
And agreement with the planning board.
Recommendation. So we have motion second.
Second again.
Yeah. Right. So we have motion second and all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Shawna Beeland, Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, Rhode Island Commerce Corporation requests approval of Solarize Tiverton program. Adoption of resolution supporting goals of Solarize Rhode Island.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you guys so much for having us. So I'm actually not Shawna Beeland. My name is Sue Anderboe. I'm from the Office of Energy Resources. Shawna couldn't make it tonight. She's with Commerce Rhode Island. They had a board meeting this evening. But I'm joined by Danny Muscher, who works also at the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, who is handling the IT at the moment. And then also Matt Ray, who works at Smart Power. Sorry. Great. So we have a short presentation, which I think you guys all have copies of or are soon to have. And theoretically, we'll be on the screen any moment now. Awesome. So I'll just get started. Sorry for the people in the audience. This is warming up. Be there anytime, yeah. But just to give you a quick overview, so I mentioned I'm from the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. So we are the leading state agency in charge of energy policy and programs for the state. And our kind of tagline is that we are leading Rhode Island to a secure, cost-effective and sustainable energy future. And we work across a number of different programs, which you see on the slide, energy efficiency, energy security, transportation and renewable energy, which is what we're here to talk about today. Our partner, one of our partners in this is Commerce Rhode Island, which is the state's economic development agency. And they run the Renewable Energy Fund, which is a grant-making fund to support renewable energy projects. And I know it's getting late and you have a packed agenda, so I'm trying to go quickly. But if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me to slow down or stop or, you know, just jump in.
Okay.
And we'll also be working with Smart Power and we'll explain their role in a little bit. The overview of what we're going to chat with you about today is, the overall goal is we want to educate you about this program, which is called Solarize Tiverton, and also ask for your approval for participation in the program. And you have a resolution in front of you to vote on at the end. And we'll just kind of walk you through, so what is this solarized program that we're trying to offer to you from the state? Why are we, why are we asking Tiverton to participate? You know, general program outline and then some next steps. So what is Solarize? So Solarize is a proven program that's been tried in Connecticut, Massachusetts, in over 90 cities and towns in both of those, combined in both of those states. And the general purpose of Solarize is to really reduce the costs of rooftop solar energy. So for homeowners and small businesses. And the way it works is that it is a, the group buying discount. So basically, it's kind of like the early days of Groupon, if you guys remember Groupon or have ever used Groupon. So the more people who choose to participate, the lower the cost for everyone. So let's say the first five residents, I'm going to make up some numbers, but the first five residents of Tiverton who decide they want to join in, the cost of their solar energy systems could be like $5 a watt. But then if a few more people sign on and suddenly it's 10 people, the cost for everyone lowers to, let's say, $4.50 a watt. They get 10 more, or, you know, we, they, everyone gets 10 more people to sign on, the cost drops to $4.25 a watt. So it's the more people who sign on, the lower the cost is. And we can do that in a few different ways. So one is, it's a really community-driven program. There's a lot of community-driven outreach. That's part of the reason we brought Smart Power here with us, because they are a really wonderful energy marketing firm who have, they've run campaigns, solarized campaigns in Connecticut and also a few in Massachusetts. There's also a single renewable energy installer who's chosen for the photovoltaic installation. So basically, the town with consultation from the energy office, Commerce Rhode Island, Smart Power, whoever you would like consultation from, would choose a single solar installer from a competitively selected process. So we would help you draft through an RFP. And the reason why you choose one is it really like, this is, the whole goal is to bring down the costs for the installer and for the participants. So there's just one, they don't, you know, everyone who wants to go solar knows, okay, I'm going to call, you know, Steve, or I'm going to call, you know, whatever the solar company names. I'm not going to name any names because I don't want to poll your minds. But so there's a single solar installer and it's a limited-time offer. So we offer it for about six to eight weeks. And what we found in other states and other cities is, you know, people really like limited-time offers, you know? It kind of like plunks along for the first like four weeks and once you start getting that deadline, that's when everyone signs up. But if you could just kind of left it open, people are less likely to want to sign up because it's like always going to be there. So it has these kind of four components. I already mentioned it's been run successfully in Massachusetts and Connecticut, a total of more than 90 cities and towns, including, including Boston. We can talk more about the specifics of these programs if you like, but interest of time. So why, why Tiverton? Like, why am I in front of Tiverton right now and not Providence or Tuckit or one of those other towns? So we're looking to pilot, oh, we are, my office, Commerce Rhode Island and Smart Power, we're looking to pilot this in three towns to start here in Rhode Island. So the three towns are Little Compton, Tiverton and North Smithfield. And again, just to remind you, the whole aim is to reduce the, the cost of these installations. And so, you know, why Tiverton and Little Compton? You guys are neighbors. So we have done a lot of work with National Grid and we've recently done a study with National Grid that shows that if we can increase the penetration of solar power in conjunction with a lot of energy efficiency work that they're already doing in your town, that we can really reduce the need for really expensive upgrades. Upgrades is the wrong word, like repairs, unnecessary repairs to, to the grid here. And if we're able to reduce that need, yeah, it's not like an upgrade makes it sound like, ooh, you're going to get like some awesome new system. It's really just like preventing needing to do an expansion could save residents millions of dollars if we can prevent that. And this is an optional program. It provides a lot of benefits. It would reduce energy costs. And so we saw that Little Compton and Tiverton, which is why I'm here, were two towns where this could really provide real benefit immediately for your towns. And so we really wanted to reach out to you guys first as, you know, the first participants in this program. Because we saw, you know, the immediate need. So what does it kind of entail? Like, what are we sending you up for? So the first thing I want to point out is, because this is a question we've gotten, we've also already talked with North Smithfield and Little Compton. The question that came up is how much money are you guys going to have to front for this? And that, that is zero. You guys will not have to front any money. They're all like, wait, but what, how much is the cost? So you'll receive assistance from the state, so from the Office of Energy Resources, from Commerce Rhode Island, and also from Smart Power will help manage the project for your town. Will provide some funding, so some assistance in developing and implementing a marketing plan to get folks interested and wanting to sign up. And will, again, I already mentioned, help you select the installer and kind of take you through that whole process. Obviously, it won't work unless you guys want to participate with us. So I have in here solar ambassador selections. That's basically, there's, normally how this works is in towns, there'll be like one or two people who are like super jazzed up about solar. Maybe they have an installation on their home already or they've always kind of wanted to. And they kind of help with volunteer management, getting the word out, and they'd be volunteers. Some of the funding that we can provide to you can help provide funding for that person potentially to, you know, incentivize them. But it's kind of a community volunteer who can help really shepherd the program. And obviously, you guys would be involved in installation selection, develop and execution of a marketing plan. So, you know, we can drive down here from Providence and say, this is great, but you guys know all the cool stuff that already happens in your town where we can reach out to people. So for example, North Smithfield is interested in participating and every year they have a pumpkin festival. And so, you know, Solarize will be at the pumpkin festival, you know, talking up what, talking up solar power and, and the program there. And so I'm sure there are lots of really awesome things that happen in Tiverton that we would like to tap into and that you guys will know better than, than I would, obviously. Though Tiverton is lovely, I kind of wish I lived here. So this is a rough timeline. The first, the big things, just to point out, you guys have it in your notes. The most important and upcoming and most recent things are having you guys vote on the resolution that's in front of you, hopefully in favor of it. And then from there, we can start launching the program. So we wouldn't actually want to start seeing any signups for the program until, as I said, there's normally like a six to eight week period. That would probably start in January, but till we have a while where we can build up kind of a buzz and a marketing plan and work together. But the first step is for you guys to agree that this sounds like an awesome program. And so the next steps are hopefully the passage of the resolution after your vote and then we can launch the program together and figure out how best to work together. Again, I was trying to go quickly because I know you guys have a packed agenda, so please, questions if I glossed over anything that is particularly important to you.
Okay. I have one question.
Yeah?
Are the, would this be available also to possibly like municipal buildings or such as schools? Where very large roofs, possibly?
So, yeah, I think that the, this same question.
Please come to the mic.
Oh, yeah. This is Danny. Sorry.
It's a good question. Little Compton, at the town council meeting, the same question was asked. And Shawna Beeland, who is our colleague at the Renewable Energy Fund at Commerce, right, has actually run this program in several other municipalities in Massachusetts where she used to work. And I think that it has to do with procurement.
Oh, yeah. So in general, municipalities have not participated because it takes longer for municipalities normally to approve procurement and working with an installer than the set time period. But the one thing.
Or if there's competitive procurement requirements.
Yeah, you might, yeah, you might need to put out your own RFP.
So we can, we can explore that possibility, but even if it's not possible for town buildings to participate through this program, our office has a variety of other funding programs that are available and we can work closely with you to make sure that we can get those projects done.
Yeah. But then the next few weeks, we'll be announcing some other funding for specifically school projects for solar energy. So if that's something, as you said, we definitely want to.
I actually have a couple of questions. I think this is a fantastic idea. And as someone who has investigated solar for my family's house from a independent person, I welcome competitive pricing.
Yeah.
Because it can be expensive. So my question is, will the, will the group prices, pricing be based on just signups in Tiverton or signups across all three of your pilot communities?
So the way that it's structured now, it could just be Tiverton. There's an option that we could talk to Little Compton because their period will be the same as yours, their timeline is the same. So if you guys were interested in partnering with Little Compton to see if, like if you think that will help lower the prices a little or have two towns working together, that's definitely something we can talk about with them as well. But in general, it's structured that each town kind of has their own, has their own RFP that goes out. But definitely, if you guys, if that's something you're interested in, I mean, Little Compton's right next door.
And I think I'm clear on this, but this is to purchase outright the panels and the infrastructure around it. This is not renting or leasing panels. This is outright purchase, correct?
So they can include, so when we put out the RFP for the installer, they can include what their prices would be for like a PPA or like a purchase agreement, like where you're basically, they're renting, you're renting the panels on your roof. In general, the program is that you, you buy the panels and they're yours. But we can include in the RFP the option for them to include the possibility of doing that. We don't have a large market for that currently in Rhode Island, but in Massachusetts and Connecticut, that is happening. So I could see it being a possibility if that was the trend.
And which entity will be consulting with the homeowner or the business owner on whether their property is optimized as far as exposure to kind of get the most solar bang for the buck?
Yeah, so those conversations would happen kind of like they're happening now when people sign up for solar. It would be with the installer.
With the installer. Okay.
Could I just add? So the installer has to meet certain requirements in order, so all these projects would be eligible, eligible to participate in the existing small-scale solar program through the Renewable Energy Fund. And the projects have to meet certain basement minimum requirements for shading and for roof exposure.
Shading and all that stuff.
In order to qualify for those rebates, they would need to meet those requirements.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? I'm happy to.
What's the initial outlay for, say, an individual? I know there are grants and so forth and so on, but what's the cost to the homeowner?
Yeah, so really, it, it varies on the size of the system that they like. So if someone has a really big home versus a really small home, a really efficient home versus a really inefficient home, it can really vary. The average size of a system in general on a home, I don't think I'm speaking of school, that goes through the renewable energy fund, is generally about five kilowatts.
I'll give.
You look like you're about to say.
Yeah, no, no, I'll give you, so I, I got quoted for a five-kilowatt system and after kind of rebates, I mean, it was like 16, 16 grand.
16. So, but the whole point of this is that it brings down.
Yeah, that group purchasing.
The group purchasing should be bringing that number down. And then there are a few rebate programs you can go through. So one is the Renewable Energy Fund and they'll pay about a dollar, a dollar twenty-five per watt for this like tub offset, and that's just a grant. And then federally, there's the federal tax incentive and that's a 30% credit. And then.
Sure. And so Sue also mentioned that the additional benefit, so not only is this program going to be able to make solar more affordable for homeowners, but we have this synergy where there's a multimillion-dollar expansion proposed by National Grid to a local substation. And we, we partnered with National Grid and said, you know, there might be more cost-effective ways that we can help reduce that impact for the ratepayers. And we did the study and it was a beneficial result that we saw solar could help with that in deferring that a couple of years. So for folks who have more Western-oriented roofs, there would be an additional rebate incentive that would be provided because in the late afternoon hours during the summer when people are turning on their ACs and it gets hot, that's when people start using the most energy. And so we've done a pretty extensive analysis with National Grid to show that those roofs could provide additional benefit to the distribution system here, so there would be an additional incentive for that. But to answer the original question, I think that in many towns in Massachusetts, I wish Shawna was here, the installers bid that tiered pricing and there's probably like five tiers of pricing. And many towns have gotten up, you know, all the way to the, all the way to the fifth tier, so that can knock, you know, 10, 20% off the, off the cost of the system. So it's significant.
Yeah. And the way that I was breaking it down before, so I said I was making up numbers, but in general, like, it'll break down like that. Like, it'll start with like, I don't know, like, four seventy-five a watt. In general, right now, systems are averaging about four fifty a watt in Rhode Island. So, they'd say, okay, we had five people sign on. That's just like, that's just like me going individually. So, four fifty watt, but if we get ten, four twenty-five, then four. And I think in Massachusetts, they've gone as low as like, three twenty-five. So, it just really depends on how many people sign up.
And it's a voluntary program.
Oh, yeah. And it's totally voluntary. There was another question we've received, is are we forcing homeowners to purchase systems? This is definitely not the case, and I think you guys got that. It's totally voluntary.
Is Smithfield on the same timeline?
So, North Smithfield is actually, they're going to start a little bit earlier. The goal, in working with Tiverton and Little Compton, we really wanted to get the program ramped up so that signup period would be kind of like January through, so that some installations could start being put up by next summer is the goal. Because the problem, the constraint on the distribution system is really a summertime peak problem. So, if we can get systems put up, like, as summer is starting, we thought that would be optimal. And we didn't want to kind of get up into the, like, holiday rush, you know, when people aren't really around or whatever. So, we figured if you hit the ground running with you guys in January. North Smithfield had just independently heard of the program and was really, like, they approached us, and so they wanted to have an accelerated schedule. So, they'll be kind of going on through the fall until like, mid-December.
So, the goal is to have 100 kilowatts of installed solar PV by the summer of 2015. How many rooftops would that be? How many actually homes would be--
Yeah, so it's about like thirty to thirty-five rooftops.
Depends on the size. So, that's thirty to thirty-five--
Yeah.
Residences--
Yeah.
Or commercial buildings.
Yeah. And our goal, so we have the hundred, hundred-and-fifty in your presentations, and that's a combined goal for this, for this region, so it's Little Compton, Tiverton. We actually think that we'll be able to, like, a lot more people will likely sign on. Like, in Massachusetts, the numbers are much higher than this. So, this is our kind of base goal, but we really think that people will really see the value in this. There will be a lot more.
And that assumes an average installation size of what, five kilowatts?
Yeah, that's like an average five K. So, if some people get big systems, or some, you know, kind of averages out.
Isn't it limited to roof systems?
This is limited to rooftop systems, so it's like, small-scale systems, but it's not limited to homes. So, if there are small businesses in Tiverton who'd like to participate and have a rooftop system, they're more than welcome to participate as well.
But you're not. You're talking about a standalone.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, like, in Westport, I've seen a field full of these things.
Now, any, if there's excess energy, does that go into the grid?
Yeah. So, the way it works is homeowners, the way our rules work in Rhode Island is homeowners can size their systems up to about 125% of their historic load. And then, the excess gets sold back, sold is not quite the right, gets put back on the grid, and you get credit. So, let's say in July, when the sun is like, really pumping, you might way overproduce what you're using. But then, in January, when the sun is lower, it's really cloudy, you're probably really underproducing, and so it kind of just evens out throughout the course of the year.
Yes, Mrs. Pelletier.
Hi, I have a question.
Come to the mic, Mrs. Pelletier.
Let's say you're a real electric hog, and your panels don't meet the need. Will you get, as a homeowner, a reduced rate from the grid just because you're a good doobie and you're trying to, you're trying to prevent them from having to set up a substation or do extensive work? Is that a consideration, or is it--
So, by signing up--
Just by signing up and getting your panels, and then you still need extra, do you get cut on, I mean, a special rate because you--
Yeah.
Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
Because you're trying to do your good thing, it's just not working for you.
Yeah. So, unfortunately, the answer to that is no, you don't get a little rate just because you put solar panels on. But you will see, your electric will drop because you put solar panels on.
Yes, that's understood, yes.
And the other thing that I would point out, which I haven't mentioned so far, is that National Grid offers all sorts of really great energy efficiency programs as well, including some specific to here in Tiverton and also Little Compton. And so, we always recommend that people try and take advantage of those energy efficiency programs before they put in solar, so you have the correct size. So, let's say you are kind of a little bit more of a bigger user. So, maybe just because your, you know, your windows are a bit E or you need a little more insulation, you can get a pretty handy audit in National Grid, and they'll help you identify ways to--
No, I, it was just a question.
No, no, that's a great question. I was getting--
And in, I don't know if North Smithfield is up and running yet, but who handles the program in the town?
So, what do you mean by handle? Like, who manages it?
Yeah. Is it an office in the town itself?
Yeah. It sounds like Matt's standing up, so I would let Matt handle it.
Hi. Again, my name's Matthew Ray. I work with Smart Power. I'm the state director. We're a national nonprofit. We work with different communities all around the country to promote clean energy programs. So, part of what brought North Smithfield to Solarize is that they had a really good participation last year in what was called the Rhode Island Energy Challenge Find Your For program. And it was an energy efficiency awareness campaign through National Grid. And what we did was we worked with them to try to encourage 5% of all households in the town to sign up to commit to be more energy efficient. When we did that, we worked very closely with the town hall and more specifically Administrator Hamilton on that. We also worked with several members of the town council to help us promote events like the Pumpkin Fest. They would come out, help us do tableings, speak with residents. So, it would be much like that. We would ask for the support of a city official or town official, not a big commitment to time. We just, we found that it really works when it's neighbor-to-neighbor, when people are speaking with a trusted source. So, that's how it's been so far.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
I just had one quick question. When we're talking about marketing materials, are, do you guys provide stock materials, or is that stuff that we're developing as a municipality on our own?
So, that's one of the great things about bringing in Smart Power is that they can help, I'll let you answer this, but they can help develop some of those materials, but in consultation with you guys. So, if you are a town that's like, we hate long signs, we would never want to do long signs, clearly, we're not going to try and provide you guys with long signs. So, I can let you--
Yeah, no, that's exactly what I was going to say. It's a good point. I would encourage you to check out like, SolarizeConnecticut.com. You can see that there's a main website, and then each town that participates has a sub-website under that. And we work very closely with the town for a marketing approach that feels like Tiverton. We will create some of the designs. We'll show you the designs. We'll see how you feel about the designs. You'll have input on the website, on any press releases that will go out. You will have final approval. It will come before you. So, we like to work hand-in-hand with the town on everything.
Sure. Okay. Great. Thanks.
No, the most compelling thing about this is that we know how utilities end up billing us, is they get a reasonable rate of return on what they've invested. So, if they have to build a new substation in this area, our rates will go up. So, the best we can do is keep infrastructure investment down to its current level and reduce usage to, or stay at that size.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Yeah, I absolutely think it's a great idea. I think it's the 21st century.
Yeah.
And those of us who live on this side of East Bay, you know, are pleased that someone up at the other end thought of us.
You're always--
Because we seem to be the stepchild in the state sometimes. But I know, we're very pleased that Tiverton and Little Compton have been thought of and to participate in this program. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion on the resolution if someone-- Ah, let's see, who shall I pick on? Mr. Gerlach, if you'll read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution, Town Council, Town of Tiverton, August 25th, 2014, supporting the goals of Solarize Rhode Island. Whereas, Tiverton, a state leader in energy efficiency practices, seeks to engage in new energy-saving measures such as generating electricity with photovoltaic cells. And whereas, the state of Rhode Island has adopted the Resilient Rhode Island Act, which seeks to protect the people of Rhode Island and make our state economy and society resilient in the face of nearly certain, but not precisely predictable, effects of climate change, and calls for the development of strategies and implementation measures to achieve the following reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. 25% below 1990 levels by 2025, 50% below 1990 levels by 2035, and 85% below 1990 levels by 2050. Whereas, solar energy is good for the environment and contributes to a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas, generating electricity from solar energy can save Tiverton businesses and homeowners money on their utility bills and can help control future energy costs while reducing strain on the electrical grid. And whereas, solar energy creates opportunities for economic development and job creation. And whereas, solar energy promotes energy independence. And whereas, Commerce Rhode Island and the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources will be offering a Solarize Rhode Island program to encourage more residential and small commercial solar electric installations, to reduce energy use, to improve the environment, and to create jobs by increasing the use of solar technologies. And whereas, Commerce Rhode Island and the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, upon approval of the Renewable Energy Fund Board, will be working with nonprofit Smart Power to launch, market, and administer the program across Rhode Island. And whereas, the Town of Tiverton has endorsed the goals of Solarize Rhode Island. And whereas, Commerce Rhode Island and the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, along with Smart Power, will promote the Town of Tiverton for its participation in Solarize Rhode Island in media stories on its website, through social marketing, and at presentations. And whereas, the Town of Tiverton will promote Solarize Rhode Island, including participating in joint outreach opportunities such as generating press releases, posting information on the community website, providing cable access information, ensuring Town of Tiverton officials' attendance at promotional events, assisting with signage placement, and other joint outreach efforts. And whereas, the Town of Tiverton will designate a person to coordinate communications activities with Commerce Rhode Island, the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, and Smart Power. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Town of Tiverton commits to promote and participate in the Solarize Rhode Island effort known as Solarize Tiverton, with the goal of becoming a leader in residential and small commercial solar electric installations in the state of Rhode Island. Resolve that the Town of Tiverton shall encourage all businesses, institutions, and households within the Town of Tiverton to adopt the goals and purpose of promoting solar energy in our community by supporting Solarize Tiverton.
Thank you, Mr. Gerlach. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, we adopt the resolution as read and agree to participate as one of three pilot communities in the Solarize program.
Second? We have motion second. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much. We're excited to work with you.
So are we. Thank you.
See you soon.
Okay. We're going to--
Should the clerk advertise for a solar ambassador, or are you looking to appoint a council representative?
If it starts in mid-November, that would be fine.
If you check, if I can just check on a couple of things, I'd be happy to help out here.
Yeah, our solar ambassador?
Just be our solar ambassador. I just need to, I need to check on the home front.
Okay.
We'd be well-served to have as much input or much participation from--
Community.
Community as possible.
Yeah. I would advertise, not that, you know, and, you know, Bill, you could, you know, have the--
Well, he won't be on the council, then.
But he could still be a solar ambassador.
Well, that's what I'm saying, he's a community. Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, let's--
He'd be trend-later.
Okay. We just so I can let the audience know what we're going to be doing, we're going to take up one more item, and then we are going to go into executive session. Shouldn't take any more than half an hour.
A half?
Forty-five minutes to an hour, and then we will be back to conduct the rest of the business. So, the next item is under Town Administrator. Approval of Contract Amendment for Senior Center Director Janice Gomes, salary increase for third year of contract.
Mr. President, as a his customer in the Town of Tiverton, we review department head performance at their anniversary date, shortly before their anniversary date, and come to the council with salary recommendations. And this is the first instance in my tenure as administrator, and I'm glad that, in my opinion, this was a rather straightforward evaluation and recommendation for Janice Gomes as Senior Center Director. This is a personnel matter, so in your confidential packet, you did have, hopefully, what you'll see commonly with me was the use of a formal evaluation form that our Paychex HR contract provided, and filled that in with some additional details. And it was reviewed and signed by the department head as it being in agreement with the context there. And to summarize, it is my view that the Director of the Senior Center has performed at an outstanding level, given the limitations of resources at her disposal, the age of the building, the availability of programs. And what I believe is most healthy is a proactive approach to the rest of the town, so being willing to be engaged in conversations about emergency management and other problems that the town faces, and doing her fair share, frankly, to find efficiencies for the town. And as you know, most recently, we seem to have had a very positive development. Now, I'm not going to count my egg before it hatches, but we have a very good lead on a replacement for a senior bus. I want to credit Ms. Gomes with reaching out to Congressman Cicilline and Rep. Edwards from Tiverton to get this done, and really staying with it, being, you know, the only way these things happen is if you're willing to egg someone, which is an unpleasant task, but Janice was willing to do it. So, with that, I recommended the salary increase that was in the budget, which by my math is just a little bit shy of, right around 1.5%.
First of all, I want to thank you publicly for all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
You know, I have personal experience, you know, from my mother going there, who unfortunately can't go there now. And the work that you do there is priceless. And I hope that all the people in the town realize what a gem we have, not only in our senior center, but in you.
Thank you very much.
And I want to publicly thank you for that. You're in agreement with the increase?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to add?
Maybe someday we'll have a newer, larger senior center, a new bus. But we're working on that, so, you know, small steps.
And a commercial kitchen.
Commercial kitchen.
And a commercial--
Yes. Yes, someday.
Okay. If there's anything else from the council? Then I will entertain a motion to take the town administrator's recommendation for a salary increase for the Director of the Senior Center, Janice Gomes, from $43,931 to $50,031 effective July 1st, 2014.
So, vote.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion for us to go into executive session, and, let's see. Oops.
Mr. President--
Yes.
I'm sorry. Could I just make my announcement before anybody leaves?
Oh, right.
It has to do with voter, a voter ID drive.
Okay.
There's going to be a voter ID drive here at the town hall on September 3rd from 10 to noon for anyone, you know, that, we are going to be requiring IDs at this primary and general election. The Secretary of State's office has agreed to come down to Tiverton. We had to request it, but they are agreeing to come down to Tiverton. We had to request it, but they are agreeing to come down to Tiverton. We're sending out flyers to Secana Manor and to the Country View and different housing senior center, and I just want to let everyone know that it's between 10 and noon, and you can call the clerk's office to see if you actually need one, but it is free, and they will come down and give you a picture ID.
Yeah, what's the date?
That is on September 3rd, Wednesday, September 3rd, so it's next Wednesday, right? Next Wednesday. And I just have one other announcement, because it is for tomorrow. Ms. Pelletier did not get on our open forum, but she has these flyers. It was approved that she would do the Dog Day at Tiverton Town Hall. That's tomorrow, between 10 and 2. Placing Paws will be here to hand out dog cookies and prizes, and at 12 noon, there'll be dog games and an opportunity for different contests and prizes. There'll be a photographer from Secana Times taking pictures around 12:30. So she also has made, I believe, 100 of the yellow scovs for dogs that need a little bit of space, such as mine.
Very nice.
Is there anything, oh, is Bob going?
No, she's gone.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Pelletier, if you could.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rowan General Law 42-46-5A1, Personnel Performance Fire Chief Robert Lloyd, notice given.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rowan General Law 42-46-5A4, Investigation Fire Department.
Second.
We have motion second. All those in favor? We're in our executive.
Let the record reflect that the notice given refers to the fact that the fire chief